Because when I signed this legislation today, you know, we hear so much about all these things, mandates, restrictions, tearing people down. Today, we lift people up. And we provide protections for people. No nurse, no firefighter, no police officer, no trucker, no anybody should lose their job because of these COVID jabs. And that's what we're doing. We're making sure that people have a right to earn a living. People have a right to have protections in their place of employment and that parents have protections to be able to direct the upbringing of their kids. And if you look at what we're doing today, Florida is leading. This is the strongest piece of legislation that's been enacted anywhere in the country in this regard. And we're awfully proud to be able to do it here today at Brandon Honda. I want to thank the Florida Legislature. We have the -- we've got our Florida number of legislators here. So I want to thank all of them. Speaker Chris Sprouls and Senate President Wilton Simpson. We also have Senator Burgess and Representatives Missoula, Groll, and I think that I saw Jackie Toledo. I saw Representative Zika and Lawrence McClure. And I think is Beltran here. I don't know if I saw him. So thank you, guys. You know, people were saying, I mean, Montana had done something. Tennessee had done something. And people were saying that this was not something that was going to end up happening. And they understood what was going on. You know, I made the call to say, we got to do this now because people are actually losing their jobs right now if we don't do these protections. So we needed to do that. And they stepped up. And I think it's something that's going to make a big, big difference for an awful lot of people. We are respecting people's individual freedom in this state. And that is something that's very, very important. And ultimately, I don't know how it ever came to this point. But at the end of the day, even Fauci, all these people would always say, no mandate, no mandate. And then now they're saying you shouldn't be able to even work if you don't do that. Some people say kids shouldn't even be able to go to school. And this has gotten so, so far out of whack. And so Florida, from the very beginning, you know, when they were bugging us, when they, all they wanted to do was lock down. We were opening the state, keeping the state open, keeping businesses open. When they would criticize us because we actually wanted to have our kids in school in person, and they said, you can't have kids in school. And we did it, and we led on that. And we've led on a number of things. Most recently, we led on providing early treatment options for people with monoclonal antibody. It was a huge success. And, you know, they don't want to tell you this, but Florida, for like almost a month, has been either the lowest or one of the lowest COVID in the entire country. And that's just a fact. You see it surging in other parts. The corporate media, they don't like it when it surges in other parts. They only like it when it surges in places that they don't like. And so I don't know if they're even going to cover that. But I see it happening. And it was something that was obviously predictable. And honestly, if they would do a halfway decent job of actually telling people there were these treatments, we'd probably be able to save a lot more people in other parts of the country. But we are, so we're proud of leading. We're proud of standing up for people's rights. What we're doing here in the legislation, I mean, you know, I've been dealing with the firefighters, police, all that. That is totally off the table for anything to be done with any of those first responders or anything. So I was, I thought that was really important. I mean, they have these folks working the whole time. And they're out doing all the stuff that a lot of other people didn't want to do. Many of them have already had COVID in the process. And now they're being told that they may, you know, have to have their walking papers. So that's just fundamentally wrong. And we will be able to do it. We recognize, unlike what you see going on with some of the federal proposed mandates, other states, is we're actually doing a science-based approach. For example, we recognize people that have natural immunity. You have natural immunity. You have natural immunity. Whatever a private employer wants to do, you're automatically exempt because of natural immunity. And I think that that's very, very important. It's also important to just look at, people say you need to mandate, right? They're justifying these mandates. But we know, and the data is very clear at this point, COVID vaxes are not preventing infection. Okay? It's just not. Gibraltar is the most vaccinated country on earth. They just locked down their Christmas celebrations. They're not doing it. Ireland has 90-plus percent adults vaccinated. They're reimposing restrictions because you're seeing surges. And so, look, that's just that the data tells us. So to say it should be mandated when you can still get it, this is a personal choice. And so that's what we're doing. And that's the science-based approach to say that this should be a personal choice. The other issue is, you know, I said a week or two ago, I said, OSHA is putting out this rule. They're going to say that whatever you need to do. But they're going to move the goalposts. And they're going to say, if you don't have a booster by a certain date, then you're unvaccinated. You could lose your job. People tried to say, oh, you know, that's not what they said. Well, now even Fauci is saying he wants the boosters to count. New Mexico said unless you do the boosters, they're going to consider you unvaccinated. So we reject that approach. That approach would upend -- that would upend a lot of people's jobs. I can tell you that right now. And so we are happy to be able to do that. And I look about Ashley Moody, Attorney General, is going to speak in a minute. The state of Florida, we have filed a lawsuit. So we're already challenging the OSHA lawsuit. That's now been consolidated in the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. And look, there's a lot of different things that happen legally on these things. But I can tell you this. The ultimate result of that OSHA lawsuit in the Sixth Circuit is that thing is going to crash and burn. It's going down. That's for sure. So we have that. But we're also, Florida, we're challenging the mandate on federal contractors. You're going to have a lot of people lose their jobs as federal contractors in January. So we have that that we're doing. And that's in Tampa in Federal District Court. And we think that we're going to be successful there. What the state of Florida has done under Attorney General Moody's leadership is also file suit in Pensacola challenging HHS's nurse and doctor mandate for hospitals. What they're saying is, you have to force every nurse and everybody to do COVID jabs, or you lose Medicare, Medicaid, all the funding. And obviously, they wouldn't be able to work if that were the case. And the institutions would collapse. And so we think that that's illegal. We think it's unconstitutional. But here's what really bugs me about this one. When you talk about nurses and stuff, the whole reason they launched 15 days to slow the spread, the whole reason the U.S. went down the road that a lot of other places are still trying to pull out of is because they didn't want the hospitals to be overrun. That was the reason they did it. And so you had to make sure you preserve hospital capacity. So that's what they said then. Now they're going to do this mandate, and some nurses, many nurses, could lose their job. So you're actually making the hospitals short-staffed as a result of the mandate. So how does this make any sense when you say you're trying to preserve? This is about power. This is about control. That's what they're doing. Because it makes absolutely no sense to be able to do this when you're talking about what would actually make sense for people. And so we're very happy to be able to say that we are fighting that as well. And I said from the very beginning of this, you needed a legal response, but you also needed a legislative response. So today, you know, we signed into law the legislative response, and the legal response is ongoing. And we're going to continue to do that. So I really want to thank everyone for being a part of this. It's, you know, I didn't think we had any time to waste. I mean, at the end of the day, we're going to have a regular legislative session starting in the middle of January. But I was looking at all these deadlines. You could have thousands and thousands of people lose their jobs by then. So I thought we needed to come in in special session. They were able to do it. And the last thing I wanted to see was see all these families in Florida over the holidays not knowing whether they were going to have a job when they came out on the other end of the holidays and we had the new year. So, you know, now we have protections. I think it's something that's going to be very, very good. And I think it's going to make a big difference for everybody involved. So thanks to everybody who spoke out. Thanks to the legislature. We're going to hear from a few folks. And then I'm going to sign the bills into law. So we have with us, actually, from right around the corner here, our Attorney General, Ashley Moody.
Well, an incredible personal honor to be here today in my home county, right here in Brandon, Florida, Governor DeSantis, because of your leadership, the leadership of our legislature, President Simpson, Speaker Sprouls, Brandon, Florida has become the shining city on the hill, representing freedom. Let me just say, as the Attorney General, I am so honored to work alongside this great governor who throughout this pandemic, when wanting to protect our citizens and the sovereignty of this state, always did so with a lens of how we can also protect the freedom and autonomy of our citizens. So important. And as this administration, we have seen time and time again make ill-informed, misguided, senseless policy decisions and then force those policy decisions on Americans, in this instance, the majority of the American workforce. We have pushed back. When President Biden said, I know it's unlawful. I'm sure I'll be challenged in court. Bring it on. We brought it. And we will continue to do so. I am so pleased that Florida and other states that have challenged the OSHA rule have seen success. We have gotten a stay in that. And today, we announced that Florida has filed a lawsuit against the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare, which has required all Florida healthcare professionals to be mandated regardless of even if you are tending to patients. We know in our rural counties in Florida, we are seeing devastating losses of healthcare professionals already. This will decimate our ability to provide needed, crucial, vital healthcare to Floridians. And so I am proud to again stand with our great Florida leaders like Governor DeSantis and take formal legal action to protect Florida workers. But I also personally would demand that this president and his administration look at the data, make decisions that are based on the welfare and individual circumstances and freedom of our citizens and not on some radical extremist liberal agenda that they keep imposing on the American people. Thank you so much, Governor DeSantis, for your leadership.
Okay, we have the Surgeon General of the state of Florida, Dr. Joe Ladapo.
Hey, guys. Hello. Hey, hey, guys. So, you know, I'd like for people to really take in how important what the Florida lawmakers under the leadership of Governor DeSantis have done. It's actually, it's incredibly important. You know, we've had a period of time over the past year and a half where, you know, we've had medical hegemony, right? We've had the medical field impose on people's ability to educate their children, to work and choose the conditions under which they work, to even open their businesses, or even to move around their communities, right? Like, that's not normal. And unfortunately, we've had leadership that's tried to normalize that. So the stand that Governor DeSantis has taken and has been, you know, supported fully by Senator Wilson and, pardon me, Senator Simpson and Representative Sprouls is, it's so important. It also serves as an example to other states in the country. Because a lot of people are struggling with this in terms of finding the balance here between trying to provide some protection against this health threat, but also keep life going, you know, and keep the things that are important to life, that make life meaningful, going. So I really, I want people to recognize how important this is. The other thing that is, that's worth noting that's related to that is this, that I love about this legislation is that it completely pushes back against this belief that some of our leadership has been trying to put forward, that you don't control your body, you know? That your body belongs to Dr. Fauci, right? And he gets to decide what you do with your body, what you put on your face, what your kids get to do. And this is, this is part of what's been, what's been attempted to be normalized over the past year and a half. It's completely wrong. It is spiritual warfare. It's completely wrong. And, you know, and this, another wonderful thing about this legislation is that it stands against that. You know, you control your body. It doesn't matter how many times they try and tell you that you don't, you don't get to make that decision. It is your body. God gave it to you. It's your body. And then the last thing I'll say is that, you know, the other really wonderful thing about this legislation is that it brings us back to the data. So this campaign, this relentless campaign to keep children in this country in masks and now potentially with a mandate for vaccine that has not been shown to improve any child's health, by the way, right? Same thing for the mask. There's just, there's no evidence that they actually improve the health of children. So we're back to the data. It's now law in Florida. And it's, again, another example of something that other states can look at. There is no data that shows an improvement of health with these mask mandates for children. Zip, there's nothing. And it should stop. It's completely divisive. It doesn't help kids. It should end. So, all right. Okay, thanks, guys.
Okay, we have Senate President Wilton Simpson.
And I just want to thank the governor. From the very beginning, I served on one of the reopening committees. The governor of us decided that, very quickly, that we were not going to lock Florida down. We wanted to give people opportunities. And knowing that from a lockdown state, all the problems that would have happened, right? The additional mental health problems we'd have had, the domestic violence we would have had, the child abuse that would have went on. We knew that locking down was not an issue in the state of Florida. Freedom was going to ring. But then let's tell a story about how we got to where we are today. If you go back to April and May and June of 2020, we were in a situation where our healthcare and frontline providers were putting their lives on the line every day prior to there being a vaccine, prior to there being monoclonal antibodies, prior to there being the antivirals that we have today. All of that was happening. And we really cherish them. We call them heroes. They are heroes. And guess what? Six months later, seven months later, because of President Trump's work through Operation Warp Speed, we had a vaccine for the first time. Within a month or so of that, we had monoclonal antibodies. We had the opportunity for options with the same, similar efficacies. And today, we have antivirals. So now that same nursing force that took us from April of 2020 till November of now 21, now we're saying, thank you, but we don't respect your private individual rights any longer. Thank you for getting us through the tragedy. Thank you for putting your families at risk. But now we're going to put your family at risk. And we are not going to do that in the state of Florida. We are not going to do those unconstitutional mandates that are coming down from the federal government. We have an attorney general that's not going to stand for it. We have a legislature that's not going to stand for it. And we have a governor that's been leading us through this the whole time. So Governor, thank you for your leadership. And thank you for being here.
Okay, we have Speaker of the House, Chris Sprouls.
Thank you, everybody. Who's ready to see the governor sign the Florida Freedom Agenda? Who's ready for that? We have the boldest governor in America who's not only kept us open during the pandemic, who got our kids back into school. But today, we'll send a clear message to the Biden administration and the federal government that Florida stands for freedom. We're blessed to have Governor DeSantis. We are blessed to have the most aggressive Attorney General in America who is fighting in court against the Biden administration to protect the livelihoods of not just Floridians, but for people across the country. Thank you, Ashley. And we have legislators behind me, the boldest and most conservative legislature in America in the Florida Legislature, who is put on the governor's desk, the most aggressive bill in the country to protect people's jobs, to protect people's jobs from illegal mandates, unconstitutional mandates, to protect employers from the heavy hand of government, and to protect our individual freedoms to govern ourselves as we see fit as Floridians. I want to thank a couple of legislators in particular. Representative Erin Groll and Representative Missoula, who carried the big bill dealing with our Freedom Agenda are here today. Representative Zika, whose bill calls for us to pull out of OSHA altogether and to say we don't want their regulation anymore. And Representative Andrade, who took an antiquated piece of statute and took it off the books, dealing with allowing government to do forced vaccinations that will no longer be in Florida law anymore after today. And the reality is, if you would have asked me six months ago if I would have thought that was necessary, like the governor and others, I would have said, no, of course not. Nobody would do something like that. Nobody would want to force people to do something they don't want to do, especially after all of these heroes, the police officers, the firefighters, the nurses, the people who took care of our grandparents in nursing homes, all of those people. Nobody would force them to do that. But then it happened. But then it happened. And then the governor and the legislature and the Attorney General went into action. And I want to talk about her lawsuit just a little bit today because some people who might not be in the healthcare industry don't know how important it really is. If we don't win that lawsuit, if our law isn't followed here in the state of Florida, there will be nurses who will leave. And not an insignificant number. If 5% of nurses or healthcare or clinical staff walk off the job, which is a real estimate, we will have a significant healthcare issue in our state. I spoke to nursing homes this morning who estimate that between 5% and 10% of their workforce will leave, will leave. These are people who take care of our parents. They take care of our loved ones. They take care of our grandparents. We need them on the job, making sure that they're taken care of. General, we stand with you. We've included, of course, money in the budget to make sure that you have everything you need to do the job necessary to protect those people. But what the Biden administration has done is wrong, is wrong. Regardless of how you feel about what we're going to do today on this bill, we should care if nurses walk off the job. We should care about our firefighters. We should care about our police officers. We should care about our nurses. And today, the Florida Freedom Agenda signed by Governor DeSantis will protect that. I thank you, Governor. I want to thank my good friend, Senate President Wilton Simpson. Without him and his leadership in the Florida Senate, the House and Senate wouldn't have got together as quickly and as efficiently as we did this week. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Governor. Appreciate it.
Okay, now we have some other folks that are going to come up and talk about their situations. Maria Bernard, where are you?
Good afternoon, Governor DeSantis. Thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it. Just three months ago, I was facing termination from the job I've held for 17 years. 599 Orange County Fire Rescue employees did not comply with the vaccine mandate before the initial deadline. A few days later, the mayor claimed it was never his intent to terminate anyone. But we will, but he would have us continue to stay masked while on duty, be subject to weekly testing, and receive disciplinary action for not complying to his terms. Only the unvaccinated were tested, and the noncompliant received their discipline. A few weeks later, Orange County's local state of emergency is lifted and the testing stopped. Then just this week, employees were advised they no longer are required to wear a mask while on Orange County property. My point being, what are these mandates truly about? A few months ago, county employees were deemed to be a threat to the workplace and the community. And now we can all resume as normal. The bills that the governor will sign today mark a great accomplishment in preserving our freedom. My hope is this will set a precedent that will help all states and all employees, regardless if they are in the private or the public sector. Not one person in this world should be forced to make a decision that strips them of their God-given freedoms or their livelihood. The right to work is the right to live. I'm hopeful, as others follow the governor's lead, the division across this nation will dissipate. We will no longer, and we will no longer concern ourselves of another person's medical status or the medical decisions that they make for themselves. Thank you, Governor, and all those involved who took time to listen to the words of firefighters, healthcare workers, and hardworking Floridians across the state. You refused to make this battle about politics, and you stood up for what is right. When few would listen to the unlawful abuse of power that employers were mandating on their hardworking employees, you listened, along with others who stood up and acted to pass legislation to protect our freedoms. Myself and countless other employees are grateful we can start to focus on our lives again and hope we never revisit this situation. Thank you for allowing us to continue doing what we are highly trained to do and love, and that is working and serving our community and providing for our families. Thank you for helping us hold the red line against those who threatened our freedom of choice.
You know, with like these, some of these people like make it, like, obviously, we've never mandated masks from the state of Florida, and obviously, we wouldn't do that. I mean, it's a personal decision. But it's like, you know, I'll go into some of these places in Florida. Unfortunately, a lot of places are doing very well. I'll be in like a big resort ballroom. There'll be 1,500 people, all having fun, nobody wearing masks. And then they make the staff wear these masks the whole time. And I'm thinking to myself, that's not treating those people well. I look around other places where they make the staff wear masks when nobody else is doing it. Now tell me how it makes sense? If you have 1,500 people sitting there, having a good time, eating, drinking, dancing, having 12 servers with masks, is that really making a difference? And so I just think we need to say, look, this is not mandate. These are what these businesses are doing. But have some, I think, some compassion for their comfort level. And if this is just for theater, that is not the appropriate thing to do to these employees. And they should be able to breathe. All right, we have next speaker, Dr. Jeffrey Beard.
Good morning. First of all, I'd like to thank Governor DeSantis, Speaker Sprouls, Senate President Simpson, and my own state representatives, Alex Andrade and Jared Williamson. My name is Jeff Beard. I am a husband, father of 11, and I'm an emergency medicine physician. Until this past Saturday, I was the director of one of the few pediatric ERs in the Panhandle of Florida. Effective 7:00 a.m. last Saturday, after 12 years of service in my same hospital, I was suspended from my job due to my inability to comply with the health system's corporate mandate. My exemptions were denied despite my sincerely-held religious convictions. Like many others, I worked through the entire pandemic, having had and recovered from COVID. And I continue to maintain positive antibody titers. This confirms my natural immunity to the virus. This confirms my natural immunity to the virus. This week, the state of Florida was at a critical point in its history. I want to thank, I want to thank Governor DeSantis, the Florida House, the Florida Senate for their work in this special session to ensure religious and medical freedom for all Floridians, protecting jobs and the rights of thousands of tireless medical providers, employers, employees, and students. Governor? Governor, I want to, I want to get back to the job that I love to do. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, from the nursing profession, Kate Johnson.
Hi, how are you all? So, this conversation-
A little louder. Yes, there you go.
This conversation was never really about if you were, if you were anti-vaccine. It's about being pro-freedom and anti-mandate. I am a nurse. I am a wife. I am a mother. I have a one-year-old running around somewhere, and I'm expecting my second. But nursing, for me, is more than just a job. It's how I've provided for my family for the last 10 years. But more than that, it's a calling. And to have bureaucrats sit in an office somewhere and decide that they can strip me of my calling in life because of an inability to comply with their whims and wishes is unconstitutional. It's unjust, and it is wrong. And I am very proud that I was able to stand with Governor DeSantis when he initiated this process, and I am even more proud to stand with him today as he signs this bill into law. It means so, so much that we have people who are willing to stand up and fight with us, fight for us, be a voice for the voiceless. Thank you very much.
Okay, and last, saving the best for last, we have Fiona LaShells. Where is she? You gonna get up here? Okay. If you need, just grab my shoulder if you want to speak into that. Is that okay? All right, tell your story. Tell them who you are and why you're here.
Hi, I am Fiona LaShells.
Tell them what grade you're in.
And I'm in second grade.
And why did you, when you and I met, what did you tell me about going to school?
Why weren't you going?
I wasn't going to school because I was getting suspended for not wearing a mask.
So, now, tell them about the mask and why, what you didn't like about it.
I didn't like the masks because you have germs on your hands, and then you touch it, and you put it on your face, and you breathe in all those germs.
So, now, since you've started telling your story, they haven't made you wear a mask lately, right?
Um, yeah.
And now, does that make you happy?
Yes.
Yeah? Do your classmates like not having to do it, too? Okay. Well, so she, she got things done. I mean, I'll tell you what. Good job. All right. Want me to help you down? You got it?
Just go in you.
Okay, so, we're gonna do the-
Making a video here. I don't know which one is which, so hopefully, you gotta stand here for something. All right, so this one is the, there was an old provision of law from like, 20 years ago that said the Surgeon General can forcibly vaccinate people. Some people thought that we had done that when we banned the vaccine passports. That's not true at all. But nevertheless, we saw it, we're like, why would that be in there? And so, this bill basically takes that off the books. I think they put it in there after 9/11 and anthrax scares or whatever, but at the end of the day, it's not appropriate in the state of Florida, so we're taking that off. Okay, who wants this one? Who did this bill? Okay, he here? Okay, we'll do one, two. Important, for sure, but Joe Latipoe is not going to forcibly stick anybody. All right, here's the OSHA plan. You know, OSHA, you read this, 500 pages, and they actually explicitly reject immunity through prior infection, even though we have all this evidence. So, you wonder, if that's how they're doing that, what else may they be doing, you know, based off junk science or ideology? And it was not a very impressive display from them. All right, so we got that one. So, those are that. All right, who wants the? All right, so here is the big enchilada against the mandate. So, that's the big, big one. So, this is- Good job, thank you. Okay. You should have one of those.
I think it's, we were, actually, we were at the, at the airport in, was it Tampa or the Clearwater Airport when we did the initial one? Was it Clearwater? It was the Clearwater Airport. And we had a lot of great, we had some of the firefighters with us, we had people from the airlines, everything. And this was just after they had announced, you know, they're published the OSHA, they were going to do it. And we said that there's times you need to stand up, and you need to make your voice heard, and we had the ability to do it. So, from the time we did that, you know, that was just a few weeks ago. To be able to get these bills, get it through the legislature, and now sign it into law, you know, this stuff doesn't just happen overnight. That's a very, very quick response. So, I'm proud that we were able to do that. And at the end of the day, nobody in Florida should be losing their job over these jabs. We want people to be able to work. We want people to be able to provide for their families. We want people to be able to have livelihoods. And, and that's just the way it's going to be in this state, and we're going to stand by all these folks, and we're going to make sure that they have the ability to make the best decisions for themselves. So, great job. Thank you, and we could take a couple of questions before we go.
Obviously, it's obvious to a lot of people that the draft that maybe you chose Brandon because of the thing that goes around on certain websites, is this why you came to Brandon because of the crawl in the Biden administration?
So, I think that Brandon, Florida is a great American city. I think the people here are fantastic. And I can tell you, my only negative on Brandon was they, when I was growing up playing baseball, they always used to beat us every year. But now, I think, you know, as governor, I'm really proud to be able to do it. I want to thank Brandon Honda for hosting us here today. And we're proud to be able to make a stand for freedom in Brandon, Florida.
For Governor, you put policies into the Biden administration's policies, you put these into law, you believe these are bad for Floridians. But cities like Tampa and St. Pete have tried to make policies that you've made that they think are bad for them. Why is it okay for you to violate the conservative tenet of the whole rule, but it's bad when the-
So, first of all, this idea that somehow conservatism is about, like, local school boards, it's the United States of America, not the United School Boards or County Commissions of America. So, the states, the states are the primary vehicles to protect people's freedoms, their health, their safety, their welfare in our constitutional system. What Biden is doing is not constitutional. There has never been, there has never been a federal vaccine mandate imposed on the general public. I hear people talk about, you know, they used, they do things in the military. Yeah, when I was in the military, they used to give me all kinds of stuff. Honestly, I wish I would have thought a little bit, but I mean, whatever it was. But that's much different than regulating the military and then imposing it on civilians in society. It's never been done before. It's not, they don't have the power to do it. There's no federal police power. States have the federal, the police power. So, that's from a constitutional perspective, it is worlds, worlds apart. Now, some people say, "Hey, these local governments wanted to lock down businesses. They wanted to force mandates. They wanted to keep the kids locked out of school." Yeah, you're damn right I overruled them on that, because they were wrong. And the fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter is, you, you don't have right to, you don't have the right to do wrong. And if I had not stepped in last year and made sure that these local governments couldn't lock you down, couldn't mandate, we wouldn't let them fine. We had kids in school last year because of me, not because of them. And that's just the bottom line. And so, people can say, "Is it the job of somebody that's elected to look out for the liberties of everyone in the state?" Or do you just say, "Hey, if someone's violating your freedom, we shouldn't do anything?" The fact of the matter is, if we would have let them lock the kids out of school last year, we would have paid the piper on that for years and years in this state. If we had let them lock down businesses and restrict and do all that, we would have one of the highest unemployment rates in the country. So, we had to stand up for people's liberties, their livelihoods, their right to work, people's right to own a business, and it was the right thing to do. But what Biden is doing, he does not have, he even admitted he doesn't have the authority to do it. Though, Saki admitted that they don't have the authority to do it. And in fact, even six months ago, they were all saying, "Of course, you never mandate. Of course, you never mandate." And so, the question is, do we actually have a constitution that constrains people like Biden? Or is it just when he loses patience, he can do whatever the hell he wants to? No, I'll take the Constitution. Thank you very much.
If you love the results of the amendments and bills, you may have objected to this particular special session, saying that it was possible a waste of taxpayer money. What is your answer to those who object to that?
So, there are deadlines taking effect very soon, where people were going to lose their jobs. If we had waited till the regular session, we would have had thousands and thousands of Floridians lose their jobs over heavy-handed mandates. And so, to me, if you think saving people's jobs is a waste of taxpayer money, heck, that's like page three of the governor's manual to save people's jobs. I mean, so, what we did was the right thing to do. I wish, I wish there were no impending deadlines. I wish that no one was in danger. Then, yeah, we would have waited until the regular session. But the fact is, we had people, and here's the thing, you know, I travel the state a lot, I talk to people, and these are people, they don't even know I'm showing up, please they'll come up. And I can tell you, for the last month and a half, the number-one issue that I had people come up to me, and they're very quiet about it, almost apologetic, because, you know, it doesn't fit the narrative to be concerned about these mandates and the way it is, and these, a lot of the folks aren't viewed sympathetically by people, you know, certainly by like, the CNNs of the world. They come up to me and they say, "You know, I've been working this whole time, I'm just worried." They say, "By December 4th, if I don't do this, you know, I'm due." But here's what hap, and they tell me their situation. Most of them have already had COVID and have that. Others just, they don't think it's the right, so, the bottom line is, I don't want them to lose their job, but that's what was going on. And so, you know, we could have, look, I could have very easily just said, "Hey, it's all Biden's fault. These, if companies are doing it, it's private, it's not me, I'm not personally mandating it on anyone, so whatever." I could have washed my hands of it and said, "You know what? It's their fault or their fault." But that's not leadership. Leadership means you get in there and you do what you can to stand by people. And that's exactly what we did today, and that's exactly what we're going to continue to do. And yes, this was something that was really big, and we're gonna, obviously, glad that people are going to be able to have some protection. But we also have other stuff that we're going to be doing next year, and these guys in the legislature go up there, they have to work very hard, and we make sure that we get, we get our money's worth on all that. So, thanks, everybody. God bless you guys, and we appreciate it.